Good afternoon and welcome to today's Virtual Board of Education meeting for the Westerville City Schools. The Ohio Legislature approved emergency legislation allowing school boards to conduct meetings virtually by teleconference or video conference, providing the meeting also can be observed by the public. In order to comply with this requirement, as well as to ensure compliance with the state's recent extension of its mass gathering ban, this meeting is being streamed live and recorded on the board's YouTube channel. While operating under this virtual meeting environment, in the spirit of maintaining public participation, the board will accept written comments for specific agenda items, as well as comments of a general nature. The board president will share more about this in his opening remarks, and the links to participate in this process are available on the board's virtual meeting webpage at Having received confirmation that the video stream is functioning properly, Board of Education President Rick Velardo will now call the official meeting to order.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for joining us for this meeting this evening. Though providing an opportunity for public comment during a school board meeting is not a requirement, the Westerville City School District, WCSD, Board of Education believes it is an important part of its engagement with and accountability to the community. In response to public gathering restrictions now in place due to the coronavirus, and in the spirit of maintaining an opportunity for our public to participate in these virtual school board meetings, we are offering interested persons an opportunity to submit written public comment. During a typical WCSD Board of Education meeting, there are two opportunities for individuals to address the board. While functioning under this virtual meeting environment, the opportunity to submit public comment will open when the meeting begins at approximately 5:00 p.m. and close shortly after each public comment section has been reached on the agenda. When submitting your comments through the provided links, we ask you to please keep your comments professional, avoid the use of inappropriate language, and refrain from identifying individuals in the case of a complaint. You may use the links on the webpage to submit written comments to the board's, for the board's consideration. You may submit comment regarding a specific agenda item and/or submit comments of a general nature. All comments submitted become a matter of public record and are subject to release under Ohio law and the Federal Freedom of Information Act. As with in-person public comments made during a traditional school board meeting, members reserve the right to respond immediately or withhold comment in order to conduct appropriate research and follow up with the speaker at a later time. Thank you in advance for your understanding and cooperation. And with that, Ms. Marshall, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Altman?
Yeah.
Mrs. Davidson?
Here.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Here.
Mr. Bell?
Here.
Mr. Velardo?
Here. Thank you very much. Moving on to Agenda Item 3, the Pledge of Allegiance. If you are able, would you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Moving on to Agenda Item 4, 4.01, a motion and a second to temporarily suspend Board Policy PO 0169.1, Public Participation at School Board, at Board of Education Meetings. May I have a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Marshall, please call the roll.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes, thank you very much. Agenda Item 5.01, Public Comments. Again, there is a link on our webpage for you to continue to submit public comments. Agenda Item 6.01, the Superintendent's Report, Transitioning to a Blended Learning Model. Dr. Kellogg, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Velardo, members of the board, and for those in the community who've tuned in this evening, welcome and thank you for being here. First, I'd like to thank the board for their flexibility in creating this opportunity to meet tonight to talk about an important decision related to moving to blended model for the school year, or at least for some time in the near future. So I'm gonna have a presentation for you tonight with a couple slides I'd like to go through, and then we'll open up for some discussion as we move forward. So this evening, I'd like to share with the board the superintendent's plan for making a transition to a blended model. Next slide, please, Jill. I'd just like to go back a little bit to our July 20th presentation, where the board approved our current plan for remote learning during this COVID-19 pandemic. And we opened with a general statement in that presentation that still holds true. In that first paragraph, we talk a lot about conditions and their changing nature and their impact on daily life. All those things still in operation. We also recognize that we have an obligation to keep our students and staff and the community at large safe and healthy, and that has driven our decision-making to this point. And we also recognize that our responsible restart plan is designed so that we can, at the district level, school level, change our instructional model as we need to based on related health data or health data related to our local region. And that's what we're gonna be talking about here tonight, how our local region data has changed, and that's how that is impacting our decision to move from remote to blended learning. So going back to that 20th, within that plan, we have both a remote plan, a blended plan, and that plan speaks to the superintendent's responsibility for making a decision when the transition, which is what we're looking at this evening. Next slide, please. And as a reminder, in that original plan, that's still in place, we talked a lot about our guiding principles. Again, the safety, health, and well-being of our students and staff and the community at large is a big part of what we're working towards. And the decisions we're gonna make, as we're looking at this evening, are gonna be based on the best available research and science that we have, which continues to evolve and be refined as we go through this pandemic. We also made a commitment to make sure whatever model we're in, we have engaging educational experiences. As you know, we have a framework for our learning plan for both our remote learning that's going on today and for our blended learning, which is something we're talking about transitioning to in this evening's presentation. And the third part of our guiding principles was around the notion that we need to be flexible, meaning we can transition and we have plans in place for doing that, and consistency, which I think is a big part of what we need to be talking about moving forward. The changing nature of the data makes it difficult sometimes to balance the flexibility with the consistency, and I'm sure that'll be part of our conversation this evening. So those were the guiding principles we began with that are still operating as part of our plan. Next slide, please. Thank you, Jill. The other part I wanna remind people of is this. This is kind of the core, big-picture document we're using for making, considering changes to what instructional model we're in. So I wanna revisit this for a minute with a few reminders. We did align our plan with Ohio's risks level, and if you recall, in our original plan, in Level 1 and Level 2, we said the district will consider, we didn't tie ourselves to it, we said we would consider a traditional schedule with students, all students at school each day. That was under Level 1 and Level 2. Under Level 3, which is where we've been for several weeks until last week, we said we'd consider the blended model. And on Level 4, we said we'd consider a fully remote model. So let's just take a moment to remind ourselves where we're at in relationship to this component of the model that we approved. This summer, when we approved the plan back in July 20th, Franklin County was in Level 3, and we made a decision to move to remote because of the data, and we'll talk about that. We now have moved to Level 2, which according to our plan is a consideration for blended, excuse me, for traditional school with students each every day. We're not looking for that at this point. We're merely looking at considering moving to a blended model. So just a reminder about, this is the framework we used underneath these levels or data sets that we'll talk about a little bit this evening that create the level system that Ohio has. And so just a reminder of where we're at. Again, under Level 3, we said we'd consider blended model. Under Level 2, which is right now, we said we'd consider a traditional schedule, and these are points of consideration, not absolutes. Next slide, please. So with that in mind, I'd like to talk for a minute about the discussion point of an October 5th date that was originally part of our discussions with the community back in the early part of July. That October 5th date did align with our approved plan. Keep in mind, we made a decision back in July while we're in a Level 3 to move to remote rather than blended, our most extreme form, that the outlier in terms of our educational program. So we determined in July, when our low conditions were Level 3, but we were moving towards Level 4, and I think that's an important consideration. In July, when we were having original discussions and moved to remote, we saw we were at Level 3, but we were moving towards Level 4. So rather than remain in a blended environment, we made the decision to move to remote under Level 3. Our daily case rates were higher, our positive test rates were higher. And at that point, the local health department, Franklin County Health Department in particular, made a recommendation that although we were at Level 3, we should be in remote, not blended. They said at that time, they're looking for, and we said as well, sustained period of improved data and allow time for transition for families and staff. It's been the basis of our plan all along, that moving from a remote to a blended should be at a time point in which the local data, Franklin County and Delaware County, warranted that, was consistent with local health department recommendations, and provided that evidence of a sustained period of improved data, and built in a timeframe for parents to transition. The October 5th date was built around that notion, a long time period for improved conditions with some weeks in place for parents to transition. But it was done at a time in which we were headed towards Level 3, and we've happened to move to Level 2 sooner than frankly we had expected. So that's the rationale behind where the October 5th date came from that I know people have locked into. So let's switch to the next slide. So this evening, I'm sharing with the board a plan that would allow us to move to a blended environment in the district starting September 21. And I wanna talk about that rationale and that rationale comparison to the October 5th date. First of all, the decision to move to the 21st still aligns with our plan. We are currently at Level 2 in Franklin County and in Delaware County, and according to our plan, that's a point at which we would consider all-in education. We're merely calling for blended at this point while we're in Level 2. It is now the recommendation of the local health department, Franklin County and Delaware County, that school districts under current conditions could move to a blended learning environment. Why? We've seen a sustained period of improved data. That sustained period now eclipses over five weeks. Our daily case rates are down under 100 per day, and our positivity test cases, that is the number of people testing positive, is closer to that 5% mark. So this has given us that sustained period of time that the October 5th date was built on. It also, if you count from this week, allows three weeks of preparation before we'd actually move into a blended environment. So it is earlier, two weeks earlier than the October 5th date we had talked about earlier this summer, but it is aligned with our plan. It is aligned with the recommendations of the health department. It does align with the data we're seeing locally, and it does allow three weeks of preparation for our families and our staff moving forward. It's not a quick turnaround time. So that's where the rationale for September 21st comes from. Next slide, please. So to be clear, we have a plan, as I've talked about, that dictates the conditions under which we move for blended. What we're really talking about tonight is implementing the plan. Most specifically, we're talking about implementation of the plan and on what date should we do that. At this point, we are looking at September 21st. But I wanna share some of the components of that plan that I think are favorable to what we're trying to do. So this is about the implementation of transition. Next slide, please. So first, I'd like to point out that with our elementary students, our K through 5, these are our youngest students, and the transition to school is gonna be very, very different under current conditions. We have requirements for masks and social distancing, all of the components that we need in place in school to put in the mitigating factors we know work to stem the transmission of COVID-19. So we really want to bring in even smaller groups of students early on so we can frankly teach them school in this new environment. So in the plan we're looking at this evening, we take both of the cohorts and split them in half one more time. So if you look on, under Cohort A, September 21, which is the start date we're looking at, on that day, we would take what we're calling Cohort A Group 1. So half of that cohort would attend on that day with students and teachers. So if a normal classroom is, we'll make it 26 kids, you split that into two cohorts, A and B, 13 and 13, split it one more time, which is hard to do because 13 kids don't split evenly, so we won't make it six and a half because that won't work, but you can see where we're going. You really now give teachers and principals and school staff small groups of students to work with at those elementary schools, to work on the arrival of the school, getting into my classroom, where I'm sitting, wearing my mask, how to use the restroom, what are we doing with water breaks, how do we do lunchtime, how do we do recess, and how do we exit the building at the end of the day? All of the components that we know we're gonna have to reteach kids in this environment. So you can see in this plan, we have that for Cohort A on the 21st. On the 22nd would be Group 2 for Cohort A, the other half. And the remaining three days, we bring all the students in on the 23rd, 24th, and 25th. The following week would be Cohort B, and it parallels what we did with Cohort A. You can see the same concept, split Cohort B into Group 1 and Group 2, bring them in in small groups on the 28th and 29th, teach them school in the new environment. On the 30th through the 2nd, the whole cohort comes in. So that's what it would look like for elementary in terms of bringing them in and showing them the ropes under this new environment, which we think is very, very important. Next slide, please. The plan calls for something very similar, an orientation time period for sixth and ninth graders. Why? These students are new to the middle school and new to the high school. And so frankly, we know last year, we did a sixth grade only day and had great success with that at the middle school in terms of orientation. We see the opportunity to do something similar here with sixth and ninth grade as they enter a new building and have to negotiate, not just the new building and being in high school, middle school, but all of the mitigation strategies that have to be in place as well. So we wanna do the same thing with them. In this case, what we would do is on the 21st, we would have Cohort A sixth graders only and Cohort A ninth graders only. And we repeat that on the 22nd. They actually get two days of orientation in sixth and ninth grade. And then on the 23rd, just like elementary, we would start the whole cohort, Cohort A 23rd, 24th, and 25th. And again, mirror that with Cohort B the following week, on Monday, the 28th, sixth grade only, ninth grade only, on the 28th and 29th for Cohort B, and then all of Cohort B. And where that brings us is, on all of this, K through 12, by October 5th, we would be in full run of Cohort A moving forward and following that schedule as planned. So that gives us the orientation time we need as part of the transition model. It's a little chopped up for elementary with the cohorts being in quarter pieces. We know that's a little bit more difficult for families, but frankly, we think that will make the school experience for those students and for those families a little bit easier to manage. Next slide, please. There are some other programs I think we wanna mention as well this evening. Special education preschool, which will continue to run with just our special education students. Right now, they're running on a partial day. Under this plan, on the 21st, the preschool special education students would start every day, all day, as part of their regular program on the 21st. Currently, we're serving specific populations of special education students in our remote learning model. As we transition to blended, we will continue serving those students each day, all day, and information for those students and those programs will come from the special education department in the days coming up to our start. Be no changes to the Westboro Virtual Academy, to that program, and all those students who enrolled there. They enrolled there because they wanted to anticipate an entire semester without having to deal with their move from, transitions from blended to remote. So there's no changes to that program as part of this game plan. So the preschool would get up and running. Our current special education students that we're serving will increase their services, and the rest of the students will start beginning in on a blended environment. Next slide, please. This slide, again, comes from our overall plan, and I just wanna provide some reminders that currently we're in that fully remote mode, and this is an important piece for people to recognize. In our fully remote mode, we are offering both synchronous, meaning live classroom instruction, live video meeting, live meetings with teachers through the computer, through devices, and asynchronous meaning, learning meaning, either recorded sessions or work that is assigned to the students to work on without direct teacher contact. Right now, in our fully remote, because that's all our teachers are doing, they're able to manage both of those environments. Once we move to blended, we will no longer be able to have our teachers offer the synchronous component of the fully remote. It will be in-class learning for one week, and asynchronous, meaning not live, learning during the weeks that students are remote, because teachers will be with the other cohort teaching live. They'll be posting assignments, providing recorded lessons, activities, et cetera, for students to work on in that asynchronous environment at home during that week. So I wanted to make sure that we understood those differences moving in, because the second we make the transition to our blended model, we will see a shift in what students are experiencing at home in that remote portion of the experience. Next slide, please. So that's a brief overview. Again, just in summary, all we're sharing this evening is that we think conditions have improved to the point in which, and for a sustained period of time, that warrant a move to a blended model. We think it warrants moving to a blended model sooner than the October 5th date that we had projected several weeks ago, for the same reasons that we picked that October 5th date is why we're looking, October 21st. We do know that there is a lot of discussion about the benefits of students being, having some portion of their learning being in person. We do know there's a lot of discussion about the potential harmful effects of students being out of school in a remote environment for long periods of time, as they have been. We think this is a balanced approach. We think it's a reasonable approach moving forward. We do recognize that the conditions that we're looking at, the data that we're looking at, will shift day to day and may show trajectory in a different direction in the future that causes us to have to relook at where we're at. And I'm happy to talk about that some more this evening if the board has questions about that moving forward as well. So that's where we're at. We are looking at a September 21 date with those transition points in place. I wanted the board to be able to see what we're talking about and the community to see what we're talking about, and happy to address any questions the board might have at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Kellogg. I know a lot of good discussion to come and questions and so on. Who would like to jump in and share some thoughts?
Okay, one question. So does this model offer our teachers enough time to prepare for making this kind of transition? Does it also offer enough time for our administrators to get the buildings prepared for students to come back in person?
That's a great question, Mr. Bell. I'd say two things. This does provide teachers three weeks to prepare. We have been doing the professional development training they need for remote learning as it is. So we've provided professional development. We've given them the learning framework so they know the expectations in a remote model. So we have those tools in place. I think teachers would always root for more planning time, and there's just, there is that uncomfortable time period where you gotta put a start date on it. In terms of our administrators, we reviewed this with transportation, food service, principals. I reviewed it with our elementary faculty reps because of the, particularly because of the elementary component and some assessment stuff that's part of that that we need to take care of. So they're all up and ready. The other component that we have in place, and I know this came in a lot of the public comments, we do have a catalog of information to share with our buildings, actually, most of them are already working on it, related to procedural things. For example, what will arrival at school look like? How's it different for students on the bus versus students who are being dropped off versus students that'll walk or ride bikes? We have those documents prepared. We have had questions regarding what will lunch look like? What will recess look like? What about restroom use, cleaning classrooms? So we have all of those discrete sets of plans that have been built by small groups within our organization that have been put together and are being refined and are ready to turn around and hand over to buildings so they can work with their teams and specify those plans to their building's needs, and then use that as a communication tool out to families and staff beforehand, because we wanna provide as much information as possible so when people show up that first day, it doesn't feel like a great mystery and what am I supposed to do? So we will, we will work hard to get those pieces out. Frankly, our reservation in sending them out earlier has been more to do with just getting used to the remote environment, and transitioning to this has been a burden and a stress on people. We felt it was better for us to get into this mode, which we'll be in for several weeks now, it'll be a full month of remote learning, to get into this mode, which will still be part of what we're doing in blended every other week, before we start unloading everybody and here's what to expect in blended. But now that we're looking at a transition date, we can start putting those things in place and informing people. Hopefully, that was what, an answer to the question you asked. Thank you.
Okay, a second question. I'm allowing everybody else to get their questions together. So what does it look like during the virtual week? So it's asynchronous, that's Dr. Nestor Baker's word there. So yeah, help, help me understand, help parents understand. Okay, so what does that look like?
So you'll probably see a variety of different kinds of lesson activities. You may see a recorded lesson from a teacher where they record their lesson and provide that as something a student can view, like you would a YouTube video. Not live, but recorded. It may come in the form of an assignment that is part of some of the digital curriculum we have already purchased, like Lexia. So it may be direction to do an assignment within a digital curriculum program we have that we use normally in the classroom. We use those in the classrooms all the time. It may take the form of a teacher-created assignment that's embedded in the Schoology for a student to work on. For example, an assignment might be to read a passage, an historical passage of an event, and through the chat function in Schoology, provide some commentary about that section specific to a question. And I've seen this one before, where students post their thoughts on that reading and then are asked to respond to the post of at least two other students that are in the chat. and then are asked to respond to the post of at least two other students that are in the chat. So those are the kinds of what we call asynchronous assignments that students might see. It could also be an assignment to do something hands-on around the house. I can imagine conducting surveys of family members, right? So there are great asynchronous assignments that we can do with students. And I know our teachers are very creative and very thoughtful and have lots of resources at their fingertips. So those are some examples of what it might look like. Hopefully that helps.
Will our, so during the virtual week, will students have access to their teachers?
I think they'll probably have access to teachers and to their virtual success coaches. Let's, let's not forget that we've invested in that resource as well. So we have kind of our first line of support, the technology issues. We are still staffing some of those and training them up. But we're getting them up to speed so they can be a resource to students as well. And knowing our teachers, they'll be checking their email. Recall that in our plan, we did shorten the student day to provide teachers more time on a daily basis for planning and responding to students as, as, as needed. So we have built some of that in on a regular basis to give our teachers more planning time, time to respond, more resources through our virtual success coaches to try and make sure we're providing as timely a service as we can to students and families as we move along. And I think some of the technology bumps we always experience as people get used to these new environments will start to iron themselves out as people become more accustomed to Schoology, for example, or some of the curriculum we're seeing teachers use.
Okay, last one and then I'll yield the floor. So are we set on September 21st, no matter what? So if conditions get worse, I know on yesterday, the numbers looked a lot worse than they had in the previous four weeks. So are we thinking September 21st, no matter what? Or as long as conditions remain stable or get better, we're looking at going to hybrid on September 21st? So we're not locked into that date?
No, I think it would be irresponsible for us to ignore any important changes in the data over the next couple of weeks. So we still have this three-week runway. As the board knows, I'm in conversation weekly with the health departments and other superintendents and we examine the data. Frankly, whereas the move to level two happened last week, we've been watching that data for weeks and saw the trend coming. It was just a matter of when. But if we see a backpelling of the data, if we start talking to the health department, and frankly, I would say this, our local health departments have been tremendously helpful in, in making these decisions. They have, I will, I will say this, they have made difficult decisions and taken some heat for that. The decision, particularly in Franklin County, to recommend, although we were at level three, that schools go remote. They took a lot of heat on that, that recommendation and, but felt firm about it because of the data. And so their decision to change that recommendation to remote under level two has a lot of credibility to it. And I think if, in our discussions with them, because we asked the same question, if they see a sustained change in the data that becomes worrisome in terms of community spread, they're gonna, they're gonna inform us. And I think that brings an important point. If that is the case, I think it bears question to, do we need a more stringent set of criteria moving forward for any change in the future? So right now we've established, working with the health department, a set of criteria that we've talked about, level, case numbers, positivity rates, that seem reasonable. But if we find that this decision now based on that data doesn't pan out, we probably need to revisit the criteria and tighten it down more and make it more stringent before we, before we make another change that's disruptive to people. That's kind of how I view it now. So we're not so grounded to the 21st that we're going to foolishly press ahead regardless of, of, of what the data says.
Some of what, somewhat of what is driving this, and I'm just jumping in because I'm sure Reverend Bell has five or six more questions. But some of what is driving this, sorry, is some of the same criteria that was really driving October 5, criteria from the health departments. And I would, and I would even probably emphasize, wouldn't we, the local health departments? Ohio Department of Health, great organization. I mean, why, right? But we're really looking Franklin, Delaware, et cetera. That's really our main drivers. Second thing is, I really am strongly in favor of this on-ramp that, that we would like to establish here. I would not be in favor of a much more whiplash, get back in right now kind of thing. I know some people would suggest that, but I, I just, I'd like the on-ramp giving families, community, teachers, time to really think through, wonder through kind of what, what, what does this mean? The, the third thing that I wrote down was really what Vaughn was bringing up. The fact that when the blended begins to get closer and closer, we are still looking at the data. We are always looking, trying to follow the, the scientific data as we have said then, and as we are trying to say now. There's no one size fits all here. And I think what we're trying to say is that this plan gives us a long runway that it still provides for the needs of our students as best we can. And, and the fact that the learning process needs to continue even as we, as, even as we look at, at the process for moving back into blended. This is, this is not a sudden shift.
I, I think that's a great point. I, I want to be really kind of clear on this, level two, level three. Our plan says, which was approved by the health department, says at level three, we'll consider blended. We're in level two. It is possible that we fall back a little bit and Franklin County once again becomes level three. That does not mean we're right back to remote. What it means is we're back to considering whether we should stay in blended. And that consideration should be based upon those finer data points that are driving that. Because there's, there's this clear line of you either two or three. And I think it's more about the consistency of that data, the direction of that data, and how much fluctuation we're seeing. So I, I don't want anybody to think that the second we've moved to level three, boom, it's off again. We will look at the data and, and listen to the recommendations.
And I like your idea. And I know we've talked about this. Is it possible that we need to look at fine tuning our, our criteria some? Just tightening that up as best we can. And I say as best we can because I was sharing with somebody, so let's say the criteria is if A and B and C happens, and okay, we automatically go back to all online. Well, what happens if A and B happens really bad? But C doesn't happen? Well, can't go back. We said we wouldn't. So I'm speaking out of the, the, the need for tighter criteria. Recognizing a pandemic does not allow you to always hit the bullseye with the criteria.
It's just, you know, when we, when we look at some of the data points, what we've looked at is average daily case rate per 100,000 people. And right now we're under 100, which was the benchmark we were looking for. And we look, and the other big data point we've looked at is positive test cases. And we really wanted that number to be down around 5%. So we are there in orange right now, which is why Franklin County is orange. If all of a sudden it's 101, does that mean it's a drastic change and we should move now? If it's 250 again, that's a whole nother game changer, right? So in tightening down the criteria, how much further down than say 100 cases per 100,000 do you want to go? And how much better can the data truly get without a vaccine? So it's not going to be zero, I don't think, without a vaccine. So tho- those are going to be points. But I think if, if, if it changes before the 21st and we see this is not, we, we need to pause, we'll do that. If we get into it and we are experiencing in our own organization or in the region concerning signs, we'll change it. And I think those are points, points at which you say, okay, let's go back to the drawing board and what some of this criteria might need to look like and go back to the Franklin, go back to the health departments and say, maybe we need to look at this differently.
Thank you. Who, who, dominate time. Who else? Ms. Altman, you look like you're ready to jump in. You have some thoughts, Ms. Davidson? Dr. Nestor Baker?
Sure, I'll jump in even though Vaughn already asked all the questions I wanted to ask. You were asking, I was just scratching them off. So as we, I guess some of the things that I would like to talk about are more clarifications than questions. One of the things that, John, I was wondering if we could do, and this puts Barbara on the spot pretty significantly. But I spent a good chunk of the day today listening to the elementary division's fine tuning of the blended model and looking at what students will be doing when they are in the buildings and what students will be doing when they're out of the buildings, what the teachers will be doing and so forth and so on. And John, you covered a lot of that and you did it very well. But I thought, given comments that I hear in the community about, well, you know, we aren't prepared. We haven't done this. We haven't done that. Thought it might be a good idea to have Barbara share a little bit more in detail about who's been engaged in that work and what that work includes, if you don't mind her doing.
I'd love for her to do that.
We have been working all summer long with a group of teachers and administrators working on a remote and a blended plan. And the work behind the scenes that we have done, that we just finished today, was creating the blended portion of this, which shows what a student day looks like if they are at home in the remote section, shows what a student day looks like in school, lists what the teacher is doing during those times and what the parent responsibilities are. We have created one for preschool, half-day K, all-day K, up through grade five. And then further in this document, there are tabs that show what our support systems would do, what our reading teachers will be doing, what our special ed teachers will be doing, what our gifted teachers will be doing, what our EL teachers will be doing. And these are all done as samples and they, the voice of many people is in each level, so they look different, which we think is one of the strengths of the program because teachers like different things. Some of them are very detailed and suggest that you spend 15 minutes doing this. Others are just in blocks of morning and afternoon. So there are samples for the teachers to look at and sit in the next two weeks figuring out what suits them best and what their classroom would look like. They all have the components that we feel are necessary for students to learn. They all have language arts and math and science and social studies broken out. And the programs that our district utilizes for those are encompassed in the plan. They're pretty thorough documents, all with the idea of supporting teachers and making the transition easier. We'll be there with questions for the teachers along the way. We've shared this document with our principals and instructional coaches so that our teachers can get their hands on it and start asking questions. Nanty, what did I forget?
You didn't forget anything, Barbara, that I, I do think that's helpful for people to hear because people really don't know about all the pretty intense work that's been going on. As you say, that particular document crystallized today. There weren't a whole lot of changes. So what had been done in, in the past months seems to be holding up very well. It's our remote learning and blended model plan. But I thought it would be good for people to get a sense of what actually is going on around the planning for bringing the kids back to the buildings and for thinking about what a teacher's day is going to look like. Now Barbara today made a comment that I thought was pretty important. One of the people that was engaged in the meeting was saying that the teachers in the building that he is part of, a number of them have actually said they're kind of excited about the opportunities they'll have to work with smaller groups of students. But even within that excitement, it's important to remember what Barbara said, which is that this is a growth process. We are going to be moving through this and we'll be learning how to do it as we go along. The good news is there has been significant time. And Ricky, we're talking about the, the ramping up. In many ways, the ramping toward moving to blended has been happening for the last several months. We've been building that ramp for the last few months. Now the part comes that we have to implement and that will be a growth process. And we need to understand that, all of us, as we go forward. But I did want to highlight the work that I was able to watch happening today and to give kudos to the couple dozen people who were on that meeting today, finishing up that plan. It's, it's a good one and it has a, a lot of potential for very strong educational delivery to our students. Also with the remote portion of the blended piece, I think we're going to see a greater utilization of our success coaches. We're just getting in the hang of having that resource available to us. As we move into blended, I think we will see a greater need for and a greater use of those particular coaches. That's also a growth process for the district as well. So that's, that I think is very helpful. As I think about the other components that go into everything, you know, as Vaughn was talking about, all of the, the different pieces that we worry about preparedness for, I know they've been working as well too. I did want to address one particular piece that has been floating around in the community a fair amount, which is where is our teachers association in this planning? Now, John, you mentioned meeting with faculty reps yesterday. Would you address a little bit the role of the association in all of this planning?
They've been, all of our associations have been tremendous partners and demonstrated a lot of flexibility while at the same time advocating for the safety and wellbeing of their members. And, and I think there's more overlap in our shared interest than there are differences. And so from being part of meetings like Barb had today or meetings like I've had, I know Scott Reeves has been in meetings. It has been Zoom meetings and hangouts galore for literally months in, in our efforts to get things rolling and moving with administrators. Everything from, as we know and board acted on, our tenants policy that had to change during this time period. Face mask policies. There's been a ton of people who've been involved at different levels and provided input. And, and as our parents have as well, particularly early on when we were talking about some of the work Barb's doing with her team that you were talking about today. The origins of that work came from parent concerns last spring that led to meetings with parents and teachers to say, we have to revise this plan. Let's work on that. And that's what's coming and bearing fruit today. And so some of the work that people are asking about is ready, has been put together. And now that we know we're going to have to implement it, now's the time to, to start putting it out there and getting people ready for it. And that's why we need these, these weeks in front of us. I know of some local school districts who flipped on a dime. And I'm not faulting them. They may have had a different system, but I've seen places flipped very quickly recently. And kudos for them. I think we have a different thought process moving forward for our folks. Um, and uh kudos for them. Um, I think we have a different thought process moving forward um for our folks, so I think this is the right timeline.
I have one very specific question. When we talk about those um groups of the cohort who are going to be, so we've got, you know, group one that's meeting and then group two will be meeting. So for parents' information, as they think about what's going on and what they need to be ready for with their kids, when group one is in the building, what's group two responsible for doing?
Group two.
Interesting that.
Group, so you're you're talking about the half of the cohort at at K five, they would be at home and remote like group, like the cohort B. And that's those two days clearly are a little bit goofier on our schedule, but let's be honest, we have lots of scheduling things that are that are goofy at times, so um that's okay. Got to make these transitions, gotta uh do our best, but those students would be of remote for for that day.
Thank you. I could just hear the questions about, well, what are we supposed to do when we're not there? What does seventh and eighth grade do when sixth grade is there? You know, people are just getting used to what they're supposed to be doing now. I'm glad that we will have a full month of remote uh of getting used to what being remote is. Uh, we're not giving it all up because all that we're learning with remote will continue as we look at blended as well. So thank you very much, John. I appreciate the information.
The the other thing I want to point out is I know there's questions regarding cohorts and how those have been assigned, and those have been set up. Um, and we've set up uh in anticipation of uh moving forward, we have set up uh the elementary cohort A, group one cohort A, group two that that are on that spreadsheet. All that information, once we pull the trigger, will be in Power School in the parent portal. So as soon as we pull the trigger, we're ready to put that documentation so parents can see which cohort their their kids are in and at the elementary for those those days where we're doing this kind of the split piece uh which group they're in. So um we've done a lot of work organizing that to make sure our classrooms are balanced, to make sure families are together. Um, all that will be uh ready, um assuming we move forward, I'll probably go out in communication this week.
Thank you, Nancy. Uh, who else? Any other comments, questions for Dr. Kellogg?
I can go.
Awesome.
So um I definitely want the kids back in school, so I want everyone to hear that and I want to say it again, I want the kids back in school. Um, I really like this thoughtful gradual start, especially for elementary kids, sixth graders and ninth graders. I think it's really important to get them in the building and uh let them kind of see their surroundings. Since this is um your decision, John, and not a board decision, I would like to share my concerns with changing the October fifth date to um Octo- I'm sorry, to the twenty first. Um, I'm really concerned as we bring people back that are hungry for it, and I mentioned this in my latter, in the last meeting. People assume school will be school, it will not be school, it will be very much focused on curriculum and not the social aspect that kids and people are hungry for. I I was really looking forward to see what happened in area school districts like Big Walnut, see how they handle going back. I'm concerned that the data is lagging. Uh, again, I want our kids back. I liked the idea of October fifth because it gave us time to see what was going to happen. Um, and I like the consistency and as a friend told me today, predictability is probably a better word, predictability of having a set time. Um, I'm very concerned about the switch for childcare for families and staff. Transportation, food service. We have got to have set criteria that's tighter for for our families and our staff. So at our next meeting, I'm going to ask that you please come forward with some tighter criteria for us. So it will signal to our community and our staff what's happening.
Any additional uh thoughts, Tracy?
I don't think so. I'll try and if I do, you know me.
I know. Ms. Altman, any shares?
Yeah, thank you. I do have some questions, of course, um lots of questions and comments have been made and uh you know, I appreciate all of those, so I'm going to try not to double up too much, but maybe a couple of clarifications from some of those pieces. So one thing, uh Dr. Kellogg, that I'm seeing even in remote right now and actually is is thinking about attendance and you know, we had, we just revised that attendance policy, so I'm wondering how attendance is going to be looked at on the remote weeks? Will it be the same way that we're doing it right now when everyone's virtual?
Yes, so the um in the blended model, there's a week of remote. And so what we're doing and the policy calls for how we track attendance during remote, so it'll be the same thing. And that's where some of those virtual success coaches become part of that. Um, all of our buildings are putting together their attendance teams, collecting that data and starting to to review that. So it'll look the same.
Okay, and can you um just because one never knows when you have a child in and um they have a certain experience, one never knows what the overall experience is. So um in terms of that attendance, can you give folks a a really concrete idea about like what are we looking for to calculate attendance?
Sure, so so let's think about attendance and regular in school. And there's uh particularly at the secondary level. Well, let's look at it this way, what we track and what we require reporters to school attendance, which is different than um, we don't do this at the elementary level, we don't do um class attendance. At the secondary level, we move to you're at algebra class, you're at English class, so we have class attendance and school attendance. It is the two school attendance that is the reportable piece that we're that is we're most accountable for. So we have to uh separate out um what a student is doing during remote around that notion. So here's a clear cut example. The week passes and um the student uh fails to engage in any of their lesson activities provided that by the teacher. That's clearly a week of absence. Now, what's concerning there is we have a young person during remote is not engaged at all. And so a reach out and an intervention and fixing that is is part of it. That's the important piece. Then there's a reporting piece, so that student would be counted absent for those five days during remote learning unless through our conversation with the family, we discover mitigating circumstances. So really there there the attendance piece is about, do we have, do we have kids engaged the way we need them to be? That's what we're really trying to do. And then we can make determinations as to whether or not it's a reportable absence from school that needs to go for reporting purposes. Different example. Um, when you use secondary again, you may have a student who has six classes and in five of them, they showed up and did everything they were asked to do. And in the sixth one, they did nothing. I don't think that's an absence from school, that's a missing what you're supposed to be doing in that class. And again, first line of defense is what's going on there, what interventions we need in place to fix this and get that kid engaged in that class? That's a whole different um scenario. So what we're really looking for is the attendance piece is a a a compliance for reporting purposes that we need to be able to do. What we're most interested in is when we're in remote, who's not showing up in plane? So the kid who didn't show up and do anything the whole weekend remote, but then walks in the door for the week of blended, we now have an opportunity to find out what's going on. Um, the kid who did everything they were supposed to in five of their six classes, we now have that teacher going to see them for that week to say, what's going on when you're in remote? So it's really about that piece. Um, there is no I I would be reluctant to be too specific on the attendance because I think we want to have those conversations and fix the problem and get the kid engaged in school. That's the goal.
Thank you, and I and I think it's the same for the virtual academy, just because I've been seeing this question around social media, right? And I've got, I personally have one kid in the virtual academy and two that aren't, so I I I see all this stuff going on. And I think there is some confusion about in the virtual academy, how attendance is calculated. Do you have to log in every day or is it about your progress that week? So does the response you just gave also hold for virtual academy in terms of it's really about having some engagement and making the progress you need to make and not about like you've logged in every single day?
Well, let's let's think about it as a classroom experience again. There are assignments a teacher will give you that says, I give you assignment on Monday and say it's due Friday. I don't know if you're working on it Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday night. If you're like me, you're probably working on it Thursday night. If you're like Dr. Nancy Nestor Baker, you probably started on Sunday because you got inside information so you could get it done. So a a teacher might define when certain parts of the assignments are due and when you miss that date, that's like failing to turn it in on time. And and again, um, the level of a student engaging is a measure of whether or not uh we got their attention, whether or not we need to intervene. But a student who doesn't log on at all misses all the assignments. So we are using a a weekly model of monitoring what we're seeing from students to have these conversations, ask what's going on, direct resources to that problem, and then make a determination about how we track that for attendance purposes. So the trick is students who are listening are parents, pay attention to assignments, meet the deadlines, show up when you're supposed to. This is life and you you'll your attendance will be fine. Um, if you're not doing those things, you're probably gonna, we're probably gonna bug you a whole lot to the point where you might uh uh might start dealing with an attendance issue. Uh, but uh we would anticipate our kids and our families are gonna uh are are engaged the way they need to be.
Okay, thank you. Um, and I'm assuming just to close the loop on this last piece, the the student success coaches, the virtual student success coaches, their attendance piece, um at secondary, are they among the team that are really looking at, you know, across the courses? Kids got, you know, however many courses they have. Whether or not they're showing up, like I'm thinking about how individual individual teachers would know whether or not a kid is turning things in, but like who's really looking at that child holistically?
That's the function of the school attendance team. So at secondary, we have multiple teachers and even elementary with specials. That information will come from individual teachers and be compiled there to say, oh, we got a problem with this kid across the board or we got a problem with this kid in these two classes. So school counselors. Um, the the virtual success coaches, I think different principals are allocating them differently. I believe in one school, they, uh, one of the high schools is assigning them by department. So they, you know, the department owns that person, they can all interact. So it may be English, I don't know what that kid's doing in math, but I'm saying this kid's not showing up for their English class and doing what they need to, or this kid needs some help. So um that's all being compiled and the schools have developed their procedures using Google Forms, et cetera, to bring that information. Very similar to what we did last spring uh to the attention of the building to make those determinations about attendance um overall.
Okay, thank you. I apologize for the really detailed questions, but I see a lot of stress because you know, parents want to make sure they're helping their kid do the thing they need to do and sometimes it's hard to know what that is. So um that's helpful information. Um, a couple of other questions, I'm wondering, um, as we transition to a blended model, can you talk about food service and food on remote weeks? Will that look like food services looking now? If you could just talk that through?
Um, I know Mr. Dorn's on the call and I don't think Carrie Dennis is, Mr. Dorn, I think I can probably do take this one, but I thought since you're on the call, uh perhaps you might um be able to provide more detail than than I would. Would you like to take this one for us?
Well, I know that we're still in some planning stages, so I'm not certain how much more detail I can provide. I do also know that the uh USDA made a, had a press release earlier this lead, this week that may greatly change our approach. So we've, we are still vetting uh some of those items right now. Um, you know, what I can say is that we'll be prepared to do uh, you know, food in person and also make sure that we have adequate uh coverage for our remote learning uh students who opt into the program. So um based on this uh press release that that came out that we are still researching, we want to make sure before we share out um the validity and the accuracy of the information that we believe that we have taken from it might greatly change the entire opt-in program. So we we I I really don't think we want to get into details other than knowing that they are fully committed to making sure that everybody wants to eat is gonna eat.
Okay, thank you. I think that's important to get across. Um, so then my other questions really have to do uh with protocols about, you know, when there is a case of COVID. So I know we've said we'll work with the health department and we don't want to get into a lot of um scenarios, but I think there are some really basic scenarios that um if you have any more information, you know, on their guidance, it would be helpful. So you know, I I just see a lot of questions when people ask, what if, what if my child's teacher, right? My child's teacher tests COVID positive? Is that automatically because those kids have been exposed to that teacher, they're automatically all going on remote? Is there, I mean, have we gotten to that level of conversation with the health department? Is it still a case by case basis or is is there anything you can say in sort of a blanket way about that?
Yeah, I I think the the blanket approach is um the first thing that happens when we have a report of someone having been in our pre- in our, in our, on our property, who tested positive is begins the conversation about that individual and their isolation and quarantine. And anyone who may have been in close proximity to them, who also needs to uh be informed and then um uh fall under whatever the health department guidelines are for quarantining um or isolation. And again, it goes back to those social distancing, mask wearing, all the other pieces that come into place. And we've had this in our athletic programs, we've had this with staff. Um, uh, a few cases along the way, so there there is no exact script, uh, this is exactly what's going uh to happen in every single case, other than uh we will um uh uh address those things, work with the health department. We do have as part of the planning documents that we've been working on, a flow chart that kind of outlines what happens if you have a scenario, for example, um if someone's at school, staff or student who starts to show symptoms, what do we do? There's that question. A student who tested positive, a staff member tested positive, a staff member who had a family member who tested positive. So all those scenarios um uh have been vetted and we have information from the health departments that will guide our decisions. Um, and we will always, our initial response will always be the most conservative and protective response. It's easier to work backwards from a very protective conservative response than it is from a, well, we'll see what happens in a couple of days. Um, so we'll start from that premise um and then and then examine how operationally we need to um make a met, make corrections for that person at work or for those students. But it may very well be that, yes, uh uh students may, because of those circumstances, um move to a fully remote environment for a time period, uh depending on the quarantine time or the isolation time period. So we will, as part of the information we'll send out to staff and families, that information will also be a part and parcel of what they'll get to see.
Okay. Yeah, I appreciate that. I think it's it's worth reminding all of us that there is nothing predictable about this, so we we do the best we can, but um just a reminder that there may be individual classes or individual buildings or individual groups of people who have to move out of the building, moon quarantine for a time period. Um, so we're trying to give as much predictability as we can, but there are just things that are out of our control. Um, and we will deal with them conservatively.
I I also know that um and we're waiting on the exact language that the governor uh is requiring schools to post and and track uh their their cases. So we're looking at clarity of what they mean by that. Uh, so we know that there is gonna, there is that obligation, so we can't just turn a blind eye to it, which we would never do anyway. We're already in that process. And we have uh established a team at the district office that coordinates back to the schools um for the purpose of responding quickly to these situations so that we don't have to try and gather everybody. We have a team of people who have been meeting and talking about what our response would be, knows what the flow chart looks like. So we have a communication chain set up so we can quickly respond when we need to and mobilize.
Okay, thank you. Um, I promise it's two more. One is quick.
You're going fine.
One is um related to Chromebooks because I know that we have a lot of Chromebooks that are out in people's homes right now. One is um related to Chromebooks, because I know that we have a lot of Chromebooks that are out in people's homes right now. And then we think about transitioning to blended. So what do families need to be prepared to do with either? Their own Chromebooks or Chromebooks they borrowed and just what's that situation?
So families, uh, students that are currently borrowed Chromebooks from us will retain those because they'll need them during remote. And we will uh encourage them to bring them to school for use at school as well, since that they have that in their possession. We still have an inventory of Chrome uh books at schools. We have specialized cleaning materials that can be used so we can share those devices. Um, actually, I was talking to Greg Lewis today, uh, who runs our IT department. And he is seeing what the gap is between where we are and where. How close we are to actually being able, because we're in this blended environment with remote. How close we could get to a more one-to-one situation uh moving forward. So I'm not sure we can get there. But the the sense right now is uh, given what we've distributed to students. Um, and uh what we have in buildings, um, we should be uh okay in terms of devices uh moving forward. Our assumption being that families that needed them in remote will still need them in blended. Families that didn't request during remote probably are still in that same boat for blended. If that request comes, we will certainly look to honor.
And is it helpful if families that have their own devices in remote, is it helpful if those children bring them when they're coming into the building for their own?
I have, I have on my computer desktop a proposed bring your own device policy that we're looking at. Um, we want to shore that up uh to provide that opportunity moving forward for our students. So. Um, that would certainly um increase uh the opportunity for us to um have devices in the building. So. It is uh in that large list of. Digital content on my computer for to to be looked at. So we look forward to bringing that forward soon.
Okay, thank you. And then just finally, the last one is, um, I'm just wondering, you know, you you're the person who has the holistic view on this. Where you see the greatest challenges? And maybe that's not really a fair question to just throw out at the end of the list, but um. You know, just from the family point of view, I'm I'm the community's point of view, just wondering where you see the pain points if there are. Because clearly there are some in making this transition.
I don't think it's resources. I don't think it's preparation. I don't think it's willpower. I don't think it's uh work ethic. I think it's what we're all experiencing. Um, I was in a presentation today, we are in a uh. Full human experience of of grief and frustration. Uh, this is not the only part of people's lives that have been disrupted, and it's not been a short time period. And schools um are clearly um an essential part of family experiences. And this is a uh tough situation for them. Um, and I recognize that decisions like this. Um, and I, it's verified in the uh. Hundreds of emails that came in over the last couple of days, you can split them down the middle on this October 5th, not October 5th decision. Um, you, you can split them down the middle by people's sense of the data and whether or not. They feel okay with it, but they're still worried. Um, so it is really about um. Uh, uh, how we're going to experience this. Um, and I have a lot of confidence in the people in our organization, and I think for the last several months. Um, for me, they've uh ex exponentially solidified my confidence in them. In that they have taken these circumstances from the moment we switched. Uh, to everything we've done and worked hard to um provide educational services, to be flexible. Um, to continue to address the safety and well-being of of our students. So I think it's just. Um, can we collectively work together? Be confident in each other across all of those differences of opinions and um. Recognize that uh there isn't a handbook that tells exactly what to do. Um, we're working, we're not, we're not guessing, we're working from criteria and data that. All the indicators from the people we talked to say, this seems right. But we really uh can't be a hundred percent confident. It's like any research, right, Ms. Alman? There's a, there's a plus or minus of uh how how accurate we are. We don't know. But that said, um, uh, we'll enter the experience and we will um. Be ready to modify if we need to um and regroup uh and try again differently later. Um, I think to Ms. Davidson's point to uh. Take again a look at the conditions we felt at this time weren't a move. That um may need reconsideration based on the experience we have. So. I think the challenge is, can we collectively? Um, set aside some of that and enter this and work collectively to make it work for our kids. To say the right things to them, to give them the right advice, to give them the right support. To uh honor our teachers who are working so hard and give them the support they need. And be ready, if we're wrong, to uh uh make a correction. And um, I I'm certainly in my role committed to all those components um moving along and um. Uh, but feel, we're in a moment that, based on what I'm seeing and what I'm hearing, we'll see. And we will get a chance to see uh how this impacts other districts who've already started. We have three weeks in front of us. We will be able to see. How the data holds up over the next three weeks. Um, so we'll start to get a sense of whether or not the criteria that are being used weren't a move um to blend it or not. And we have frankly, because we're not at the front end of this, we have a little bit more luxury to do. Um, as some have suggested, let's kind of wait and see, will we have that kind of built in? Um, but we have to, at some point, we have to um pick a date and go. And um, if we said October 5th today, all of the same questions will be here uh two weeks later. I don't think any of the questions will change. It'll be the same concern, same questions. Um. Uh, so I I I I understand people's, I'm giving you a long answer. Uh, I understand people's trepidation, understand people's concerns, I understand um. Their questions, um, and I I do want people to know that this is uh uh, we're not going to anchor ourselves to this. Um, irrationally, we will um do what we've done. Frankly, we were um being um criticized from some elements because we went remote when we were at level three. And people feeling the data warranted uh moving to uh blended during that time period. And we said then what we're saying now, when the data looks like this, uh, then we'll look at that. And now the data looks like this. And uh, I think that's why um uh our team is uh looking to implement the plan the way we are. Sorry for a long-winded answer.
Thank you. It was a very open-ended question and thanks to everyone for um your patience with my questions. So, thanks.
Good questions, good questions. Anyone else?
Sure, um, here's one more, maybe two. Um, so. Are are we expecting uh our teachers to perform? Uh, cleaning in between class periods? I'm thinking now secondary, so middle school, high school, when we're changing classes each period. Is there a cleaning that will be taking place in between each group of students coming into the space?
Uh, um, I I I'm gonna ask Mr. Dorn if he wants to participate in the answer. I will start by saying, um, we are required to provide teacher-specific cleaning supplies that they can use. And that's no different than any day, right, where um you may have a kid with sniffles in the classroom and, you know, after they leave, you wipe down the desk. Um, I don't, we don't have an expectation that they're going to take on the role of our custodial services. Um, but uh, uh, maybe I'll let Mr. uh Dorn talk a little bit more about uh some of the protocols related to sanitation.
Think um, Mr. Bell, that you are accurate in that at the secondary level where we have a lot of class changes that we're going to probably need to do. Something more than we have done traditionally, which is why we have provided um. Uh, a a lot of materials to every staff member for every learning space, regardless of the age level uh that for the students that they have. Um, so there is going to be an expectation that at some point, uh more than one time during the day, that that desks may get sprayed. Uh, just to minimize what what might have happened, uh, you know, just your normal. Um, household disinfectant spray and wipe kind of thing, not not what our custodial team is going to be doing at the end of every day where they come through with their. Their um big spraying devices and and spray all kinds of things in the room and and have that sit time and dwell time and let everything dry. So. It's a, it it's definitely, there are definitely going to be some new protocols. We've we've got some information for our custodial team to follow. Uh, but it'll probably be from a classroom standpoint with a teacher, much more like Dr. Kellogg was describing. Hey, that, we wanted to make sure everybody felt comfortable that if they saw something, they didn't need to go find somebody. They had everything that they needed in the classroom to address it themselves and feel comfortable about moving on.
Thank you. Um, and um, just clarification on facial covering. Um, that it is our policy. Um, and so can you share a little bit with us about? So so how will? We handle situations where students show up and they don't have one? Or there are students that are refusing to wear a facial covering? How how are we gonna manage those situations?
Well, we have a policy that requires all students and staff to be wearing face masks um at school. And so um, it's just going to be constant communication that that's the expectation you need to do. We do, we will retain at building level, um, masks for any student who forgets, because. I I know it's shocking to some of us who have young children or adult children even, sometimes they don't remember things. Um, and um, sometimes it happens with adults too. Uh, you know, our kids have been living in this time since March. And they have consistently seen, I, when I'm out and about, the little bit that I am. I see youngsters uh in the grocery store with masks on. I see them at uh. I've spent a lot of time doing home improvement during this time period at Home Depot with masks on. Um, so I think there is a general understanding that that's an expectation. So forgetting it is one thing, non-compliance is an isolation and you can't be here. Um, is the way it has to be. Um, so we will continue to communicate that. I don't anticipate that being. Um, uh, a a large problem. A- a- and frankly, if it is, my my re- my question is, what do you, why didn't you vote for uh go ahead and enroll in virtual academy? Where mask is not an issue because you're at home, but you know, that's kind of a cheap answer, but that that's truth, right? If that's an issue for you that you don't want to comply, then there's an opportunity for you to to get your education through through that environment.
Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Bell. Uh, Nicole, I'm gonna ask you a question and Scott Reeves, I'm gonna ask you a question. These are just, these these are your brief questions, if you can chime in. Uh, Nicole, any um financial implications for us in this transition process? Anything that you see down the road that we may want to be aware of?
Um, I don't really see a difference with moving the start date from tran- from. Where we are now fully online versus coming into a blended model. Um, we've modeled uh what it will look like with the extended time for bus drivers, and that's what I presented at. A previous board meeting to the board, so I don't really anticipate anything changing with that. Um, we continue to communicate with the state to try to get more coronavirus relief funds. We actually just received word today that we did get. The broadband connectivity grant um from the coronavirus relief fund, so that's about ninety-four thousand dollars. That we applied for around a hundred and fifty thousand, uh, but they. Reduce the allocation, I'm assuming, to um ensure that every district that applied did receive funding, so. Um, I I don't really see anything changing other than what we've already discussed.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Scott Reeves, my question for you would be, we heard from Barb a little bit about her team, how they're feeling about it. I I'm just a general comment for you, uh, Scott, how how how's the sec- how are secondary folks feeling about this? What what, what's the feedback that you're getting from them? Just just generally, how are people feeling about the on-ramp and the blend and 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 going back into blended if possible?
Uh, well, from a, thank you, Mr. Velardo, from a preparation standpoint, uh, in actuality, this is what we spent most of the spring and summer preparing for. If you remember, we didn't pivot to fully virtual really towards the end of of July, so the the we're fully prepared to go and enact the plans. Oh, I I think that Dr. Kellogg hit it very well. People are just exasperated. They are, and it's been a long time. And uh, just as teachers were getting into their groove, starting with virtual. Um, now we're shifting back back to blended. It's just one more thing of exasperation, but Dr. Kellogg is is exactly right. You you. At some point, as the data mitigates, you you've got to make a decision and then move forward. And the the same questions, if we didn't go back to October 5th, it would be the exact same questions. And so. Um, I think we are, we've compared to the districts around and you're on the core team as well. We've tried to be uh very prudent, very thoughtful. Very conservative. We we've often uh not gone as far as some of our neighboring district districts or as fast. Whether it's with our athletic programs or our school programs. Um, a- and so I think that prudence will 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 have us ready to go on the twenty-first.
Awesome, thank you. Thank you. That's that's a great reminder that really this is what we've been preparing for. Uh, all along. This was the main thing. We were really, thanks, Scott. That's it's very helpful. I appreciate that. Uh, I I was thinking, Jen, your last, your last uh question that you had for Dr. Kellogg. You 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 apologized for asking it, and I was thinking to myself, well, I had, I had written it down. If you didn't ask it, I was gonna ask it, and it was the question of. You know, what is, I think you described it, it was the pain point, what is the, what what is the concern there? And um, if if I can just speak um. A little bit from my heart, if that's okay. I hope my head's attached as well, but a little bit from my heart. Um, you know, in this, this Board of Education represents uh seven children. In our schools and grandchildren in our schools. Uh, represents other loved ones going back into the schools. And Mrs. Davidson is, she's not speaking for all of us, but she's speaking for all of us. We we want, we want to go back in. We 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 want the kids back in, whether it's the normal school or or at least just kind of partway there. Um, but I am. Uh. Prayerfully concerned. Uh, because this is. A pandemic is a pandemic. That this is a real thing. And that's why I have been significantly pleased. By the cautious nature. That this district has exhibited. Uh, when Delaware County went two, Franklin was still three. We said, no, we just can't do it. We're we're not one, we're not one county, we're two. We're not two school districts, we're one. Um, the fact that some will flip a switch and jump back in, that's great. I think Dr. Kellogg said, well, kudos to them. That's great. Not knocking anybody, but I'm just saying I'd much rather have a two to three week on-ramp. I love giving the sixth graders and ninth graders a little special treatment. I I just think that's a smart thing to do. But, you know, I too am sending somebody in that's 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 pretty precious to me. And I've talked to parents that are. Parents and community members that are absolutely sure, we should have been in from day one and doggone it, get those kids back in the class. Well, I'm glad you're, you know, so sure of that. And I've talked to other ones that said you shouldn't go back in until. And I've talked to other ones that said, you shouldn't go back in until the year 2022. I don't know. Okay, you know, some people see things blacker and whiter than I do here. I, I'm just, the board and, and staff administration, you know me well, I sometimes just say things. And I'm just saying, we, we love these kids. And yes, we love you too, staff. And we think that this is based on the data and information we have. We think it's probably the right way to go. Maybe 51%. But I am, I am not always in agreement with the administration. But I'm thankful for the thoughtfulness from Dr. Kellogg and Ms. Marshall and Scott, Barb, all of them, all of them. There are people behind the scenes doing more work than we have any knowledge about. And those, these are really good people. So my prayer, I know I'll get in trouble for saying that, but my prayer is that we're trying to do the right thing. We're trying to educate. We're trying to care for the health, safety, and wellbeing from the preschoolers through the seniors. And for those in our first year of teaching with us, and those who will retire at the end of this year. So I, I'm not cutting off any discussion. You have more questions? You have more things? Absolutely. But I wanted Ms. Marshall and I wanted Scott to chime in and just, and just share. And this has not been an easy process, nor an easy decision. But I'm thankful that we can wrestle through it together. And I hope the community will hear us. If not agree, I hope they will hear our intent. Any final questions about this presentation? Now, I, I'm not quite sure what to do right here. And Nancy Nester Baker, being the parliamentarian that she is, help me out. Dr. Kellogg, I believe you wanted to respond to at least some of the comments that were sent in. And we, we went over the public comment section, Dr. Nester Baker. So I'm going to recommend that we pretend this responding to public comments is within the superintendent's report.
I think that's absolutely the right thing to do.
Thank you. Because we don't have another public comment section, and I do not, all kidding aside, I do not want people to think we are just blowing past that. We're not replying to all of them. But Dr. Kellogg, if you want to share some with us and some of your thoughts, and if we have some responses, we, we, we jump in as well. Please.
Sure. So these were provided to me at around four o'clock this afternoon. So I have read through them and kind of made some notes. I will share this, that as we've done in the past, these will be posted on our website with, with all the information. So if people want to scroll through and see what was presented, it'll be available to them. I would say that 98% of what came in was on the question of moving to blended. And I didn't score it because it wasn't intended to. But certainly there were those who feel like the October 5th date, we should hold to that and a rationale why. And there were those that feel like we're excited to see that we were talking about moving to blended sooner. And so to all the people who provided comments on both sides, I hopefully, this evening, you heard the rationale about why. And I can understand that you may not agree with those perspectives. But hopefully you've heard with clarity what the basis of those decisions were. It was, it was interesting. You could read an email, one would say, too soon. And then the next one right under would be, appreciate, I wish it'd gone sooner. One of the concerns that was evident, a lot of them was, are we going to end up being in this back and forth, toggling back and forth as the data shifts? And I hope what we said tonight was, hey, we can't do that. That's not any consistency. So if we're finding that our decision point, or the, the information, and it's not one thing, but the information we're using to make that decision, if it doesn't hold up very well in this, this decision point, then we gotta, we gotta make corrections to what that is. So we don't flip-flop back and forth. So no, I don't intend in every two weeks announcing another change. We'll try this one, and if it's not working right, we'll make modifications. So I, I think that's the essence of what was in there. Some questions regarding WVA and some problems, I will acknowledge, we had some problems with the vendors, particularly with Calvert, that we're working through that were on their end. And we're still working through those individuals who are fluctuating between what's best for their kids. And we continue to look at that. The other big error was, hey, what are the protocols for? And that was a lot of the board question tonight, like, what happens if? And what's, what's it going to look like when they get to school? And what's lunch look like? And so as I shared, we have that packet of protocols around those very specific school operational issues that will be part of what we share with people, including the protocols for what if someone is tested positive? How will that impact? And, and what will we do in the reporting requirement? So I would, I would say with great confidence that that's the bulk of what's in here. And if an individual felt that the presentation or questions from the board and my responses didn't cover something that was in here, please follow up with an email directly to me, and I will do my best to provide greater clarity to that question. But I think we did a pretty good job of going through those. Again, I'm not saying everybody's going to agree with the decision or the rationale, but hopefully they see the thinking behind it.
Great. Thank you, John. And I, I will, I will say, you know, we get, we have gotten a lot of emails. And I, I, I will say thank you to the community, even the ones that maybe had, had a little bit of an edge to them. I mean, I get it. This is, this is an important topic to people. So thank you for sharing your thoughts, concerns, frustrations with us. We try to respond as much as we can. We try to be transparent. And I will, and I will stick to that, that, that that's important to us. So thank you, Dr. Kellogg. I think we are ready to move forward. Moving on to officially moving on to Agenda Item 7.01, we will meet in a regular meeting of 6:00 PM, Monday, September 14th, likely hybrid out of the district's Early Learning Center at, on, on 14th, as I said. Then, you know, 8.01, just seeking a motion and a second to adjourn this meeting.
Before I do, President Velardo, I'd just like to share with the community, those that are listening, and spread the word. We have communication that will come out, may go out tonight in response to the board meeting, if not tomorrow morning, with the information and from the presentation tonight, and getting the ball rolling for people. So look for that coming soon, folks.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you for sharing that. So a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Marshall, please call the roll.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nester Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Thank you to all the teams serving behind the scenes and staying here with us. Thank you very much for all you've done. Yes, I moved, I moved to adjourn. We are adjourned. Thank you.
6:43.
Board members, thank you. Please hold while we stop the YouTube stream.